All right. We're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Can we get a roll call vote, please? Or a roll call. Not quite a vote yet.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
And Mayor Peterson.
Here. Before we begin tonight's meeting and do our pledge of allegiance, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of former councilmember Ron Graves. And to let the community know that there will be a gathering of friends at the Seymour Marine Discovery Center in Santa Cruz on January 12th, this Sunday, at 1:00 P.M. Ron passed away late last year in his home in Capitola with his family by his side. Ron served on Capitola City Council for nearly thirty-one years. I'm thirty-three, so that's almost as long as I've been alive. And while he and I didn't always agree on everything, I always respected Ron for his passion for our community. And we met to discuss things on the agenda. And while we didn't always agree in our discussions, we always walked away with a handshake or a hug agreeing that we would speak again. Ron dedicated an amazing amount of time to the city of Capitola, and for that, we are deeply thankful. And to his wife Diane for sharing him with all of us. With that, I would like to dedicate this meeting to the memory of Ron Graves and everything he did for this city. Now if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight's meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV, Channel 8, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 A.M. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 P.M. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from our city website, cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. Thank you for being here. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones. And when you come for public comment, if you would like your name to be spelled correctly in the record, please sign your name at the sheet at the podium. We're gonna move on to item two, report on closed session.
The council held a closed session on three items, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, and liability claims, the claim of Stacy Austin. The latter of those three, the claim of Stacy Austin, will be brought to the council in open session this evening. The other two claims, direction was given to staff.
Thank you. Item three, any additional materials?
We received no public comment. However, some of you eagle eyes caught a few items in the minutes. We now have accessible furniture listed, as well as updated titles, so the corrected version is back there and it is already changed for when they are approved.
Thank you. Item four, is there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. It's the time for any members of the public to address the city council on any item not on tonight's agenda. You'll have three minutes. Individuals can speak one time during oral communications and must address the entire city council. All speakers, as mentioned, are requested to print their name in the sign-in sheet if you would like it spelled correctly in the minutes. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council?
Yes, please.
Welcome.
And thank you, council, for listening. Appreciate you all and your hard work. And we are the champions of preserving Capitola's unique cultural and historic character. The Capitola Mall redevelopment should reflect our charming town and be an extension of our delightful wharf, our beautiful beaches, and our quaint village. It has been proven that residential use for this site with the proposed six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dwelling units does not fiscally benefit Capitola. Moving the bus station over by Macy's is a great idea, yet it certainly is not the solution to our existing, well-known traffic problems. The eleven-hundred cars that are planned for the new residents should instead be anticipated for visitors and locals who will gladly spend their money at the new and improved mall. How many of the proposed low-income and senior housing residents will regularly shop and dine in the mixed-use environment or buy a five-dollar cup of coffee every day? What can we do to create a vibrant mall with a compelling draw and has a positive economic output benefiting Capitola? I see a hotel on the mall property, a mall and a hotel fitting there perfectly, transient tax twelve percent naturally. Retail come, housing go, the housing has to go. We'll build a mall where people want to go, spend their dough. Self-contained mall, and they will love it, so spend their dough. Housing never, 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 no, 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 no. I see a pizzeria, other restaurants we will go. Selling of goods and services is what we need. Concede agreed. Okay. So you think you can own us with building sky-high? Want to build it and leave it so we can ask why? Or maybe destination stop maybe? Street grid's gotta get out, housing's gotta get right out of here. Something really matters, build community. One thing really matters, let's make Capitola some money. Now Cherie McCoy goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to address the council this evening? Hi, welcome.
Hi. Karen Hannah, and I won't sing. Couldn't follow that act. I'd just like to invite all of you and the viewing audience to attend our next Sip and Stroll, which is February 8th in the Village. The businesses in the Village are very proud of the fact that all the profits from the Sip and Stroll go to nonprofits here in the county. This event is gonna generate $2,000 for the Capitola Foundation, which goes to support the CPR training for residents in Capitola, and $4,000 to the Capitola Parks and Recreation. And this money could be used for, you know, we're not saying it has to be used for anything in particular, but it could be used for scholarships for the children in Capitola to attend Camp Capitola in the summer. So if you want tickets, just go to eventbright.com and search for Capitola Sip and Stroll. And, you know, they're selling well. Every other event, Sip and Stroll event, is sold out, so we're really happy with that. All the events that the BIA put on that charge any kind of admission fee, the three sip and strolls, the cookie walk, and the window decorating contest, they all generate funds for local nonprofits. The total is between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars a year. And none of the money goes to the BIA. The expenses get paid out of that money or out of our budget. In addition, of course, the businesses give an additional, I don't know, thousands and thousands of dollars to schools, other nonprofits, associations. So I'm just very proud of the fact that Capitola Village businesses are this generous in the county. Capitola, the city of Capitola has always been extremely generous to social service agencies and things, and the businesses are just following in that same manner. And I do see that there is on the agenda the review of the contributions received by the city. And I just wanted to point out that the $2,000 from the Capitola Foundation is the $2,000 we gave them last year for the CPR training. So we're gonna make that an annual amount that we're gonna do to support that CPR training. So I hope everybody gets their tickets and come. It's a great event, a lot of fun, always new, unique little wineries, and we just appreciate the community's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will bring it back for city council and staff comments. Does anyone on the city council have any comments this evening? Yes, we'll start with Vice Mayor Brooks.
Great, thank you. I received an invitation from the Santa Cruz County Office of Education that I would like to extend to my fellow councilmembers and the public. They are hosting their COE five-year strategic plan. They're having two events, one on January 21st at the Watsonville Civic Plaza, and one on January 28th at the Santa Cruz Museum of Art and History, between 5:00 and 7:00. There will be, it will be a COE resource fair, student performances, and updates from the superintendent and local leaders. So I have some more information here I can pass out.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Story, you have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that today, January the 9th, is law enforcement appreciation day. So I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly appreciate the fine men and women who serve on the Capitola Police Department and keep us safe in our community. Their dedication, I think, is exemplary. And I would just encourage everyone to take a moment, and this day is maybe, well, it's gone and passed, but maybe every day of the year, we should take a moment to appreciate our law enforcement officers. So, thank you, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Yes?
I did not know that the BIA was raising money during these events, and it was great to find out. I found out a little while ago when you told me about the cookie. And so I went downtown and watched a scurry of kids running around with their baskets, getting cookies. They were so happy, I couldn't believe it. So that was a good thing. I like that kind of event. So I think we still have two surveys going, Nikki. I believe the survey for the library is still going, right? Not the library, the recreation? Okay, great. So go online, and you can help out the recreation department and Nikki's effort to make the recreation department more relevant to current needs and fill out a survey. Also, the RTC, supposedly its survey was ending on the 3rd of this month, but I just checked it, and the link is still active. So if you're interested in weighing in on the new study that's going on, trying to figure out how we're gonna spend our money and what items are important for you in terms of transportation on Highway 1 in other parts of the county. So look for that survey, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bator?
Thank you. I just wanna share with the public, I had a personal announcement to make. I had a recent medical diagnosis, and because of that, I'm gonna be leaving tomorrow for Seattle for some treatment, and I will be gone until March 26th. So won't see me at a few meetings for a while, but I plan to be back March 26th. So, thank you.
We look forward to your return.
Thanks.
All right. Well, Councilmember Story beat me to it, but I was also going to thank our law enforcement officers here in Capitola and throughout our community, and really nationwide, for all the work that they do. We're gonna move on to item seven, which is our consent calendar. The consent calendar is voted on in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the public or city council member would like to request that specific items be discussed for separate review. Items discussed, or pulled from the agenda, rather, will be discussed following our general government agenda. So let's start with, is there any member of the council that would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there any member of the public that would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will move forward and entertain a motion on consent.
Motion to adopt consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're gonna move on to general government and public hearings. Item 8A, item regarding lifeguard contracts. Do we have a staff report?
It looks like we gotta get the system probably running here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, councilmembers. The item before you is the lifeguard contracts for the 2020 season. So some of the background is that we're discussing two different contracts that would cover lifeguard services for the 2020 season. And to begin, so in 2012, the city began contracting with Santa Cruz Marine Safety Division to provide the beach lifeguard services at Capitola Beach. And since that time, there have been extensions that were authorized up until last summer. Some years back, CSLSA recommended that the Capitola Junior Guard Program should be trained by a lifeguard agency. And in order to address those recommendations, the city worked with a couple of different models and last summer contracted with the Central Fire Protection District in order to provide that open-water lifeguard training for our junior lifeguard instructors. This was a very successful model, and we had been in conversation about a broader partnership with Central Fire, but due to the merger with the Aptos La Selva Station, Central was not able to offer beach lifeguard services for this 2020 season. So for this season coming, the 2020 season, lifeguards, the Santa Cruz Marine Safety Division is again willing to provide the lifeguard tower services as they have done for the past, since 2012. And again, Central Fire Protection District will conduct swim tests in order to determine junior guard applicant eligibility. They will also be providing the open-water lifeguard training for the Capitola Junior Guard staff. And that training does meet or exceed the USLA standard for open-water lifeguard saving. Excuse me. The proposed contract from Santa Cruz Marine Safety Division is the 91,119. This is an eight-thousand-dollar increase from the previous year's contract that includes an increase in hours as well as personnel costs. The proposed central contract of 12,085, this is an unchanged number from the prior year. So the recommendation for you is to authorize the city manager to sign a one-year contract with Santa Cruz, the city of Santa Cruz Marine Safety Division, for the lifeguard services, the beach lifeguard services, as well as authorize city manager to sign a one-year contract with the Central Fire Protection District for the lifeguard testing and training services. And I am available for questions at this time.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah. I'd just like to understand the agencies that you're referring to, CSLA or something? What is that agent?
So, the CSLSA is the California Surf Lifeguarding Association. So USLA, which is the national lifeguard, CSLSA is the local branch of that. And so they are the body that provide professional services and development to lifeguard agencies in California, as well as organize the regional competitions or assist in regional competitions for this area as part of the national body of the USLA.
So when our junior guards go to competitions, they're the ones that organize and run that?
It is, they support that. It's different lifeguard agencies ultimately organize all the competitions, but the CSLSA is the one that provides kind of a professional development aspects to lifeguard agencies and the organization for the competitions.
Okay. My second question, you know, in your presentation, the cost go up, eight-thousand dollars, right? And you mentioned there that it's increased hours. Are we providing more services to the city of Capitola or junior guards? You said increased hours.
So previously, we had a few hours in the day from the nine o'clock to eleven o'clock hour where we didn't have tower services because of a different staffing situation. So in addition to, we had asked the city of Santa Cruz to provide that additional tower services, so that way we're covered when our, excuse me, when our junior guard program, because our junior guard program starts at the 8:30 timeframe, and so that we would have lifeguard services and have our junior guard staff being able to do programs, so that would be two separate.
Okay, so our junior guard lifeguards were doing both, but now we're having them more focused.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? No? Seeing none, we will bring it to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to council for comment and deliberation. Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, thank you for keeping on top of this. Junior guards very important in Capitola, and I hear very good things about your involvement in this, and keep it up. Definitely have my support.
Any additional comments?
No, I move that we accept staff recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8B, report on Capitola wharf damage. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Excuse me, council, for not having that ready.
No problem.
So somewhere the last time we were here, in December, we're here talking about an emergency contract, unfortunately. This is damage to Capitola wharf that occurred. And I'm gonna start off with the pictures, because they're the best way to describe it. You can see in this picture, taken by our city clerk's husband with his drone, is a, two pilings that have been broken. They were broken in high surf on January 1st. You can see that the decking has sagged here. This is about ten tons of concrete and a hoist, small boat hoist, that sit there, causing us to sag. When this occurred, the wharf was closed immediately, and we hired an engineer and a contractor to come out and install a steel beam. That's what it looks like today. Steel beam was installed, and you can see these little tie rods here that are actually picking up and supporting the weight of the crane, the concrete slab, and the wood decking. So that's the condition we're in today. We have a railing around it, and the wharf has been reopened. So really quickly, I mentioned most of this. January 1st, wharf was damaged and closed. January 2nd, we met with the engineer and the contractor, evaluated the deck under the hoist was still settling. When I was there on January 2nd at 9:00 in the morning, it settled about six inches. When I was back there at 2:00 that afternoon, it settled another three inches. So it was moving quickly, and we determined that we needed to take immediate action to save the hoist from falling into the ocean. So starting on January 3rd, the contractor installed the beam. He actually had the beam installed and the first set of anchors supporting the concrete installed by 6:00 in the evening on January 3rd, which took most of the weight off of it and stopped the settling from occurring. He then came back, so that was a Friday and a Saturday, and then came back on Tuesday, installed some additional anchors to support the wood structure underneath. That work was completed on January 7th. On the 8th, Public Works installed the safety railing. You saw, and today, the wharf reopened. We are estimating the cost to date for the contractor is about $25,000. The next steps, obviously, are to replace the broken pilings to that hoist, which is a key element to the boat and bait shop business. Can't be used, obviously, in the condition it's in. So we need to get the deck back in at the right elevation and support it on good pilings, so we need to replace the pilings. Unfortunately, when we've lost pilings in the before, we've never had the settlement occur, you know, because it's usually just the deck boards and structure above it. And so if we get an inch of settlement, that's easy, something we can deal with when we put a new piling in. But because of the weight of the hoist and the concrete ballast, we're having a hard time figuring out how to get it jacked up, so if we put a new piling in, we can set it down there. Both the engineer and the contractor have come up with multiple options. One is to install some more steel beams that will allow us to jack up the outside of the wharf where the deck is and actually extend the steel out over there and try that. The other one is to see if we can use the broken piles by slip lining a fiberglass pile, which is what we want to go to anyway, over the stub, if you will, that's coming out of the mud, and fill that with concrete, and then from there, jack up the pile. So we're looking at both of those. Obviously, driving any new pile would require a pile driver. If we go with the slip lining, it's possible that we will not need a pile driver for that. So there's a little cost savings we may see there. It's more of what's affordable, what's doable in a short time that we're looking at right now. In order to determine if the failed piles can be used for slip lining, we need to dive the, do a dive inspection and see their condition underwater. We're currently working on scheduling that dive inspection. So the recommended actions tonight are to ratify the emergency actions taken to protect the wharf and authorize expenditures from Measure F funding. This is what we did with the other emergency project along the beach. Measure F funding is identified for one of the big parts of it, and the biggest part of it is improvements to the wharf. And there's about 1.2 million dollars in the current revenue for Measure F. That would certainly cover these expenses. And, you know, I'll say that certainly, whatever we build now, we're gonna make sure will fit within the rehabilitation project, so we're not rebuilding whatever we do within the next month or so. We won't need to redo that as part of the rehabilitation project. So, you know, those Measure F funds will be spent just a little earlier than the rest of the wharf. But tonight, I know on the agenda it said we may be requesting additional emergency actions, but none are required at this time. And certainly, we will be bringing any contracts back to the council for the final repairs at a later date. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Story.
Steve, if you're unable to use the slip house after you've done the dive, how much, well, what's Plan B, and how much more will that cost?
I don't have firm costs yet on any of them, but I suspect, we know to bring a pile driver out and walk it out on the pier is minimum about of $100,000 by the time you mobilize and drive a few piles. We're hoping that if we're able to do the slip lining, we will not have to bring out as heavy a pile driver. We might be able to do it with a boom truck or something, and I'm anticipating that could be half that cost. That's kind of a guess at this point, to be honest with you, but that's kind of what we're, the limits we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Yeah, so Steve, you mentioned the pile driver had to come out, and it could be approximately $100,000.
Correct.
And the project that we have set in two years, would we be having a pile driver come out again at the same cost? It would cost the same rate to bring it out in two years.
Right, it'd be the same rate to mobilize. Just the, we'd bring a pile driver out, the contractor may choose at that point to bring it out on a barge, which would be a different expense, but we'll need a pile driver for that project anyhow.
Is there any way of not having to wait the two years and start some of that work earlier to alleviate some of those costs?
Certainly, we could look at replacing some of the failed piles that are on the wharf now and try and replace them. At the same time, I think we could convince the permities, the coastal commission mainly, that we want to be proactive and replace some of the failing piles that have been identified as part of our study. We couldn't do the widening part, because that's an expansion of the facility, and I don't think we could ever get that done on an emergency, but it's certainly possible that we could replace other piles.
Okay, and worth maybe asking for the widening if by chance, I mean, could always ask, right?
We could try it, but it would be difficult, because we'd be out of compliance with CEQA, and there's a whole host of other agencies that are involved in the widening project that aren't necessarily for this emergency work, but...
Okay, does our city manager need direction from council to move forward with that recommendation to ask to add additional... to ask to add additional work to be done sooner than, in this project than waiting the two years?
I think our number, so our number one, we will, we will investigate that and, and check where, if we're going to be bringing the pile driver out on scene.
Mm-hmm.
We will work and figure out as much of the work as possible that we can do that makes sense. If there's some way that we can avoid double mobilizing.
Right.
Absolutely, we will pursue every avenue that we can to do that. I think it's, I think as the Public Works Director said, it's not very likely that we could put in the widening project in advance, but we will certainly look into it.
Right.
Our goal, though, is, is to slip line at this point the remaining piles, assuming they're in condition.
Mm-hmm.
We'll find out when we dive.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the structure of the wharf, but the fact that you had significant sagging, is there any chance it's former, other damage to the wharf that's been transferred back, I guess, to the bait shop?
No, we got lucky in that regard, in that the pile caps, which are the stringers that go from pile to pile, pile perpendicular to the, the length of the wharf, actually had a joint in them, about halfway between the, the hoist and the bait shop, so there was no deflection. They sagged, but they, they didn't bend, if that makes sense. They, they bent, so there is no damage. That's why we're able to reopen the wharf. If that, if we had been in the other condition, we probably wouldn't have been able to reopen the wharf without that.
Got you. So it's like cantilevered out or just bent?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. With that, we will bring it to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Oh, my apologies, I was so...
Contemplating.
My apologies.
We were wondering why you were here.
I'm Willie Case, I own the wharf house out on the end of the wharf. Actually, the only comments I want to make, I, I want to express my appreciation in a public forum to, to Steve and, and his incredible staff for immediate attention to a, a, a big need out on the wharf. We opened today, and, and that's pretty incredible. That's seven days of closure from a rather severe condition, and, and I just, I felt like the council should be aware of the great work your staff is doing for you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
All right, with that, we will, is there any additional member of the public that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to council for comments and deliberation. Any comments on this item? Yes, Councilmember Batorf.
First of all, I think we got really lucky, looking at that, I think the fact that the hoist didn't fall into the bay really was very fortunate for us, and I don't know how all those members held together with, especially that much weight. I'm, I'm going to be very optimistic that this overpiling, what, what's the term you call it?
Subplanning.
Subplanning, yeah, because that's kind of the plan we're intending for the, the new portion of the wharf when we do that, and, and if we're able to do that there and then kind of dodge this bullet, because that's what we're doing, I think that's great. My only concern is, is that should we have to drive piles, I think we're at a point now where we have, in my mind, this council by the document that we kind of authorized for moving with the new wharf, is we've got the kind of pile that we want, the concrete fiberglass pile that can be expanded to, and that should we drive any new piles anywhere on that wharf, they should be that type of pile, so that they're the kind we can add on to. I think your hope is that we don't get into that extreme budget right now. I, I think what you're asking us is just for money to authorize the repair for that, or are you, are you looking at money now for possible pile driving?
No, I, I anticipate we'll come back to you with a contract for, for the additional work.
And then that's it. My only concern at this point is, is that should, should any piles need to be driven, we should, we should adhere to that policy of those type of piles. But with that, I'm okay with making a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second, but I have a comment.
Sure, we have a motion and a second. Continued discussion, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, so last time I was here, up here in city council, I did mention to the public at large that it's great when people from the public come here and, you know, thank city for all the services that it does. So thank you, Willie, for coming, I really appreciate that, and I encourage other members of the city Capitola, when you're happy with the city and what it does, please come and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
No.
All right, I just want to say briefly, thank you so much to Steve and our, our whole Public Works crew. You've done an amazing job, as usual, and none of us are surprised that there's just like exemplary work coming out of the city and from your department, so thank you so much. And please pass that on to your chair as well.
Great to hear.
Yes. With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on. Item nine, considering items for municipal code Title II Administration Cleanup Ordinance, which is why I ran for council in the first place. Anyone asks, I say I just wanted to work on municipal code Title II Administration Cleanup Ordinances. And we're here to make... And we're here to do it. Come true.
Are you ready for that?
I, I can't run it from here, so if you can...
I've got it, so give me a high sign.
Got it, thank you very much.
I don't care.
Okay, as, as the mayor introduced, we have a living document in the shape of our municipal code, and from time to time, laws change, practices change, language changes, and we need to keep up to date. Within this section, there are pieces that fall into that category. We have both mandated and language changes we need to make. Basically, overall, fairly administrative work, but there are three areas before we act, bring you an actual ordinance where we would like council direction and feedback. And when we come back with the actual ordinance, there will also be a few other pieces that are not from the direction. The first item is something the council brought up last fall regarding how, the process for removing a planning commissioner. Currently, it's a two-step process, and as you will recall, in Capitola, we have individually appointed commissioners. And should, at this point, a, the appointing council member wish to remove his or her commissioner, that council member would state that that is their intention, and then a vote would need to take place with support of a majority of the council. So it is the two-step, an announcement by the appointing council member, and then a vote by the entire council. We did look at how some other jurisdictions that have a similar individual appointment address these. In some cases, in addition, well, they will simply allow a council member to remove theirs, just to make the announcement that I plan to remove my commissioner, and we will, you know, I will be opening recruitment. And they also allow for the greater council, someone else on the council to request for the removal of a council member, and then that would come up for a majority vote. Another option would be to make it a supermajority vote of four members, so... It's a, right now, we have an and, what the current, one of the possible recommendations, I should say, is to make it an or, should the council choose. So that's something that we will want feedback on. The second item is referrals to an advisory body. This is when some, an issue comes up and a council member says, "We should have traffic and parking, look at that." Right now, there is no process in code for that, and we can just keep it that way, but sometimes these are fairly large issues. Somewhat recently has been the jewel box traffic. That went to traffic and parking, turned out that there was really not much that traffic and parking could do. It came back, it was a lot of time and work. And so staff wants to know whether the council feels like having an individual make that request is fine and appropriate, and we don't need to make any changes, or if they'd like to have a little more discussion on those pieces. So options are, you know, actually requiring it to be agendized, or to get a general sense of support for that action. And then the last...
Before we get off, I'm sorry, before we get off that one, I think one of the points I would emphasize is that, I think it's important for council members to understand that when an item gets referred to an advisory body, there's a fair amount of work that ends up taking place, both on a staff, on a staff basis, to support that advisory body's discussion and deliberations and research and understanding an issue, and in addition, work by volunteer members, in most cases, they're volunteer members of that advisory body. And so the question is, is can it just happen with one council member at a meeting saying, "I'd like them to work on this," or it does, should it require a vote? Should we put it on the agenda and have a regu-, regular council action? Should it be, you know, with the concurrence of another council member at the meeting that item gets referred? So that's why we're bringing this up, just because the referrals to advisory bodies, they're sort of not insignificant actions.
And the third item that we are looking for feedback on is to change language about placing items on the agendas. As you well know, for yourselves, you must do that, make those requests out of public hearing and say, "I would like to see this come back to the council for discussion." Our code right now gives more power to a committee chair. If it is within that jurisdiction, the chair can simply place an item on the agenda, and staff wanted to point that out to the council and see whether that is something that you would like to change and, and remove that section. So after I finish up here, we will ask you to go, we'll go through each one and get direction on the three items that we were seeking that. Use that to write a new ordinance, and the, it will include, as I mentioned, other items. We have directly quoted old election language, that's not what the estate code says anymore. We have some practices in the appeals process that we just want to clarify that this is how it is done. We still have the redevelopment agency as a section, that can go. So items like that will also be included, as well as the three items that you are giving us direction on tonight. So I guess we can take them in the order that we had, so if you'd like to give us, ask, just, excuse me, specific questions about any of the three that we've brought forward. All right, does council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Batorf.
I may have a question for the city attorney. My question is, would this be the appropriate time, since we're reviewing this, if we wanted to initiate a policy for removing a mayor?
I, I think so. It would probably, so we looked into this question, and you don't have to have a procedure for removing a mayor. However, if at some point you want to remove a mayor, you need to do it pursuant to a procedure that you have adopted. And so what cities who do not have a procedure on the books do if they want to remove a mayor, is they adopt a procedure by resolution prior to removing the mayor. And, and that's a tough, as you can imagine, a like, a highly politicized process, because you've got a removal pending, and so you're adopting a procedure at a time. And so it, it's a good practice to have a procedure on the books and to negotiate it when you have no intention whatsoever of removing a mayor. It's good to have that as a backup if that time should ever come. So, and it would be, this would be the point, we could do it by resolution, but I think it's better practice to do it by ordinance, because then twenty, thirty years from now, when we're all gone, the, the city attorney at the time will not have to dig through, and city clerk will not have to dig through past resolutions to find it. And this is probably the ordinance in which it would live, so this is a good time. That's a very long way of saying yes.
Well, as, as the mayor said, that she ran for the purpose of cleaning up, and this is a cleanup opportunity for us, and I'm thinking if we're going to go through the trouble to generate a policy or procedure for a planning commissioner, it's, it's kind of like we, we did something a while ago, we gave the city council a raise, and we didn't give the planning commissioner a raise, and we kind of missed that step, and I'm thinking that's, these two seem to me to be hand in hand. So I would, would suggest that we, instead of going through three items tonight, we go through four, and, and it may end up that the planning commissioner procedure and the mayor procedure are identical. I, I, but that's just, I would like to discuss all four tonight, if it's the will of the council.
The procedures could certainly be identical. I mean, both planning commissioners and the mayor serve at the pleasure of the council, and so essentially, the minimum that you need to do, or even the maximum that you need to do to remove either, is to take a vote in, in public, obviously, it needs to be a transparent process, but that's all you're required legally. Anything else, you can work out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand.
So, talking about Ed, in terms of mayor, I have no problem talking about that, but we didn't agendize it, so is that an issue?
That's a great question. I, I think it's fine here, because, especially if you talk about it as another change that you would like to make to this ordinance, because you're, this is the ordinance in which it would live. So not only, I think, could you talk about this, I think if any other council member has any other suggestions of changes that you would like to see to this ordinance, now is the time to raise them.
Additional questions from council? No? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it to public. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for comment and deliberation. Who would like, does anyone have any comments? Yes, Councilmember Batorf.
Well, I, I don't know, do we want to go by, by them one by one, as Linda suggested, and rather do it that way?
Yeah.
I have a comment on each item, so it's, if, if you want, if Linda would like to do that.
If the mayor would like, yeah.
Yeah, the mayor, but I do have questions and...
Yeah, absolutely.
Or comments, I have comments, I'm sorry.
Let's do a comments and conversation about the first item, the removal of, of commissioners, or removal of mayor, or however, whatever we want to throw in, in that bucket, and, as, as appropriate.
Okay, then if it's, I, number one, which is the removal of a planning commissioner, my comments are, is that I am okay with the removal of the word "and" and the insertion of the word "or," and I'm fine with three voting members with four present.
Ditto.
Yes, Vice Mayor Brooks.
I would be interested in, actually, I agree with Councilmember Batorf with the "or," but I think that it might make more sense if it were a supermajority for four council members, because then it's, it's, you know, it's the one, it's one, the one person, the one council member who made the appointment, or the four rest of the group who, who agree with the removal of that planning commissioner and/or mayor. I think that makes more sense.
Any additional comments? No? So we're doing one vote, correct? But right now, we're doing comments on each individual item, but we'll have one vote? I don't even think you need a vote. No vote, it's just direction. No. Just direction. Okay. And then we'll bring an ordinance back to you, and then you'll vote on it. Oh, I see.
But I've heard two can, you know, I like to...
I don't have clear direction yet here.
So, so if we do, if it's, you know, if we don't settle on something immediately, then I think a motion would make sense.
Okay. For the, for the sake of discussion, I'll say that I am also in agreement with removing the "and" and putting the "or." I also agree with Vice Mayor Brooks that if, if it's not the person who appointed that commissioner asking them to be removed, then it should likely be every single other person on the council that believes they should be removed. So that's just my opinion for the sake of discussion, but we have different opinions on the floor, so to speak. As, would Councilmember Batorf or Council, Vice Mayor Brooks like to elaborate any further or, or share any additional comments?
I think four people have spoken, and we haven't heard from one, so I...
No pressure.
Who is that, who is that one?
Ah, well...
Okay, I, I, I'm fine with a supermajority, but as I was sitting here thinking, and unfortunately, Ed, you're going to be gone for, like, three months, so we would be unable to come with a supermajority during that period, period of time. And so if there was something significant issue that the majority of the council felt needed to be acted on, then our hands would be tied. So if we can come to a solution that that particular scenario, then I'm fine with a supermajority. Or if you said that with the remaining council members that are, you know, present and serving, that could maybe serve it. So I would just maybe ask for that little amendment.
So, so it would be a, a supermajority of the council members present? Right, yeah. Councilmember Batorf, how do you feel about that?
Well, a, a, a supermajority of the council members present essentially would say that, that if one person was gone, three would be sufficient to, to carry the vote, and if... And if, I, I think my concern is, you know, just, just what, what backs the movement is, you know, I think that mostly items we, we vote on are by a majority vote of three, we're not a seven-person council, we're a five, so I mean, I still think that three is a significant number. I'm trying to think, and maybe the city attorney or the city manager can help me, there's certain things that require a super majority, tax measure, or.
Urgency ordinances require a super majority. Anytime you want to stop debate requires a super majority.
Adding an item late to an agenda.
Adding an item late to an agenda.
You know, in this position, for the removal of the mayor, or the removal of a planning commissioner, it would probably be a contested item, it may be obvious to, to two, or maybe three. I don't know that you would ever get four, or, and because, you know, my, 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 my feeling of how it plays out is that one person who, who, the way we have this is a person could, who, who had, if my planning commissioner was bad and I wanted to remove him, I would recommend that, and it would probably not reach any opposition. But, but if, if the council felt that somebody, some planning commissioner, or if the, the mayor wasn't performing, I think three is sufficient. I mean, I, I, I think trying to get a, a complete unanimous body to support that is probably, you know, it nullifies the, going through the process. And I think that we make a lot of big decisions for this city on almost everything else, and like I said, I, I could be on the losing end of this, but I feel strongly about three votes is, is enough to make a decision in this city.
Understandable, councilmember Bertrand, you?
Yes, so I'm, I'm thinking about how this council would be working, you know, amongst its members. And so a super majority is, is kind of a high hurdle. And to require a high hurdle when there's clearly some dissatisfaction, to me, is too much of a thing to ask. So if three people on this board realize that there's some difficulty with the commissioner, I think that's enough. Because you want to have a commission that's going to work properly in conjunction with the city council, or in terms of the mayor, right? So sometimes high, asking for a high hurdle is, is not going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I'm just thinking out loud, to your point, councilmember Batorf, about the Brown Act and when how one would be brown acted. So we would only have permission to, like, if there was something like this, I'm just trying to play out all scenarios in my mind, the person would only be able to speak to one other person, that would technically still leave.
Always.
Yeah, so you would still have the three left out of the five. Like, it wouldn't benefit that, I'm, I guess I'm talking in circles here, but I'm talking out loud mostly for myself here. But to, so I, I can see how three, how three could work because of Brown Act. It would, it would be in support of that, that the council mem, or the person who was up for discussion would still have the opportunity to speak to somebody else that's still on council, they still would have that opportunity. And there would be enough of the rest of the group to make a decision without being impacted by that person, is what I'm, what I'm getting at, you know?
So it sounds like, if I'm understanding correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that councilmembers Batorf and Bertrand believe that three of the five council members would be sufficient to remove a planning commissioner or a mayor? I believe that councilmember Story, if I'm understanding you correctly, believes that as well? For the sake of if someone was missing, that you would, that three would be sufficient, only if someone was missing, or three would be sufficient, no matter what? If you don't mind my asking you to share.
No, thank you. I was speaking of if, in this instance, which we're really going to experience, if one council member was absent, we should redefine what is a super majority. And in that situation, a super majority would be the three remaining votes in that case. So, so that was the scenario that I was trying to address with this action. Now, on that general question about should you remove a planning commissioner with just three votes, I guess, I, my tendency would be to agree with councilwoman Brooks. Because a removal is a, of a willing, functioning, and working planning commission, removal is a pretty severe action to take against somebody. And I think that if we're going to do that, there should be, I pretty much consensus, it should be a pretty obvious and serious violation, and not just political rancor, which three votes could amount to political rancor. And so, I mean, in my experience, doing that kind of forced removal should require, in my view, a super majority. So that's my thought about it. But I'm, I'm, I think I could live with either scenario, if it came to that. But my tendency would be to agree with councilwoman Brooks, that you should have a, a, a vote of four, or the super remaining council members, to remove a, a, a working planning commissioner.
If I may add, especially if we're going to be looking at the addition of mayor, I think that, of the remove, the process of removal of mayor, I think that you bring up a really excellent point about the, the politics that can get involved in something like that. And to get a full consensus of the majority at the time makes the most sense for me.
One more quick.
Yes, please.
I, I just want to really take advantage of thinking council, councilwoman Brooks said, she says, I was thinking out loud, and I love it, because what you did is, you brought up something I hadn't considered, and that is, although if, if I talked to some other council member and wanted to remove a planning commissioner, I couldn't guarantee that could happen. But you, if you were opposed to it, you could talk to one other person, you could guarantee that action by, by stopping it, because of the super majority law. So it's an advantage to the fact that if you want to stop something, the Brown Act doesn't hurt you. Whereas if you want to take an action, because in, in the, and to make the action successful, I would not be allowed to talk to two other people. Would have to rely on that open debate and discussion, whereas you could thwart an issue by having a conversation.
That's a really good point.
It wasn't mine, it was, uh, councilmember Brooks.
It's what I do, guys, it's what I do, I think out loud. I was playing it all out, I'm glad someone.
Anyway, I think what we need to do is bring it back, and we're obviously going to vote on it. I, I, we, I don't want to beat it up tonight, I, I.
I, I need, I need you to play that out, though, if, if, if the mayor allows. I need you to play that out for me one more time, so I can fully comprehend what you're saying.
What I just said?
Yeah.
If, 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 if myself and Jacques, and, and I wanted to get rid of Kristen, okay, I could talk to Jacques, okay? But, but I can't get, I don't know if I have a third vote. Whereas if, if Kristen said, Yvette, bro me out, vice mayor, don't get me removed, you've just thwarted the action, because you two can talk, and because of the super majority rule, even though I get Sam to vote with me, it doesn't happen, because you two have created an alliance. So the Brown Act favors you, and it doesn't help me.
Is that bro me out?
That's how we talk, actually.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, at this point.
I love the skill, the role playing.
I, I think we all understand the situation now. I think at this point, we have enough direction to prepare an ordinance, obviously, it'll be the source of more debate, and obviously, we can tweak it, make it a super majority or just a majority, that change can be made at the hearing, so. Yes.
Councilmember Bertrand. Yeah.
Since his recommendations for an ordinance, I like to separate advisory committees, like FAC and Planning, from the mayor. So I think we should have a proposed ordinance that deals with one, the mayor in one sense, and then the other in a different sense.
Are you jumping topics on us?
These are all, this is all in one ordinance, correct?
This is all in one ordinance, right.
But you just want separate.
Another word, a different paragraph, or clause, or line.
You mean a different paragraph, or however it's delineated, for a different procedure, or different discussion for removing the mayor versus removing a planning commissioner?
Separate out these issues, so.
I, I was actually going to raise that as well, I think that's a good point. You could have separate procedures.
Right.
You could have a super majority for one and not for the other, if the council wants to
Yeah.
just complicate things further for you guys.
Better lively discussion, okay?
We can discuss it at the next.
You're, you're always allowed to talk aloud, and, okay.
Is the council satisfied with, with what we've discussed, and that the staff believes it has adequate? We're good? Okay.
We're kicking it down the road.
Well, no, it's got to come out for, they're going to prepare, you know, option for us.
And then you can discuss it tomorrow.
When we have something specific to debate, then we'll, it'll come back.
It's pretty specific already. Three or four?
All right, we're moving on to the number two within this, referring items to an advisory body. So as mentioned by city clerk, either we require that it be an agendized item in a council majority, or a council member can make a referral at a council meeting with the concurrence of one or two other members, correct?
Or we remain silent as it is.
Or we remain silent. Comments on this, councilmember Batorf?
Uh, I think that if someone wanted, if I want to say I want to recommend something to the parking commission, I should, I should require a second. Someone should, there should be a second vote to, to, to generate that. So, so one of us just doesn't generate that action. If it wouldn't be a vote, it would just need a second.
Okay.
So a little counter to that, when someone comes up with an idea, it may not be obvious at first why that is a good idea, you know? And it will take some work to do a proper presentation, so that you have enough to make a decision. So I have no problem asking staff to put that work out before the various commissions or before us, so that we have something to think about and come up with a discussion. So I think one person's enough. You may be lucky enough to convince someone, if you do it ahead of time, so that's another way to look at it.
Yes, councilman Story.
Thank you. Well, I guess I, I want to reflect back, because in a recent meeting, and this is probably why this came up.
No.
I had, yeah, yeah, that's what they say now. But let me, I, and what that item was, there was a person here at the podium talking about gas-powered leaf blowers. And, 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 and I made the referral and asked that it be referred to the Commission on the Environment to study it, okay? Now, in doing that, my expectation was staff would take the item, they would go to the Commission on the Environment. The Commission on the Environment might say, we don't want to do this, this is too much work. And staff may concur with that. And then a report would come back, and there would be an explanation at that time about where that item is going, and maybe why it can't move forward in that body. And then we would have a deliberative process, which would take probably a majority to move any further. So I think it's okay for any one of us to be able to say, can we just refer this to one of our advisory bodies, without it become, having to be a, a politically supported item, which then becomes almost more of a mandate to that body, that they feel like, well, they have to move forward and tackle this item, because now two council members have weighed in on it. And to me, it's just a, it's an opportunity to address a citizen and to refer an item that we may not have enough information on, to bring in more stakeholders and community members. And my, it very well be that at the initial meeting, that that committee may say, we cannot do this. This is just above our pay grade, we get paid nothing. And so, and then bring that back, and then we have to decide at that point, well, do we drop it, or do we, are going to move forward with it? And I don't know requiring, and the reason why, you explained, Jimmy, why you maybe wanted to have additional council members weigh in, I don't know how that addresses your issue. Because, you know, two people could chime in, but then you got the same issue at that committee level. They may still say, we, this is too much work, we can't do this, and those assessments, and so. I think it, I mean, I'm, I've used it, and I would like to be able to continue to use it, without having to depend upon other council members, just to have that initial introduction. Now, if there's going to be anything more than that, then yes, I think there should be more of us weighing in before too much staff and city resources get used on a particular topic. So that's my sense of it. I think it's, I think it's okay, I don't know how it creates a problem, or how the alternative would solve a problem, so.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
From our normal practice, if we were want, if we wanted to put something on the agenda, we would look at staff and say, we'd like to put this on the, the agenda, or we would like for you to further explore this option, or X, Y, and Z, is that correct? So in a.
We're not talking about the council agenda.
No.
Talking about referring to a commission.
To committees and commissions, right.
Right, and so if somebody were to come up and say, you know, I'm interested in doing this, instead of the, I mean, this is the scenario, instead of me saying to that person specifically, this is the action that's going to be taken, I'm thinking it's more a play on words, right? That I'm, I feel like this is a, we're getting mixed up on, on the process, where instead, we could just say directly to you, to staff, could we explore putting this item, or can we look to see if this particular board or advisory committee can take this on, staff, can you look further into this? Is that different than what you're saying, councilmember Story? Could?
So, so let me, let me, first off, I just want to say that.
It's not different, right? So we still, at the will of council, can, I mean, we get to do that with any agenda item at the beginning, we can say to staff, we'd like you to do X, Y, or Z, right?
So, sort of. The Brown Act articulates a few things that council members can do in a meeting about items that are not agendized. You can ask staff for a report at a later, at a subsequent meeting on a particular issue, and you can ask staff to put an item on the agenda. Asking to have an item referred to a committee is not specifically articulated in the Brown Act as something that the council can do. So what you seem to be contemplating is, and I, I'm not sure if I'm capturing this correctly, but could you just say to the city manager, figure out this issue and report back to us? That is well within the Brown Act, yes, you can do that. We have decided, I have decided, my read of the Brown Act is that you can say at a meeting, I would like something referred to a committee. The question is really about, you know, referring something to a committee arguably uses more staff resources than referring it back to the council, because then you're just using your council, and there's a staff report, but it's just the staff, I'm kind of merging into your territory here, but it's really just the staff preparing that report. Whereas a committee, they may spend months working on something to get it. So to have one council member requesting that is, it's really about, it's really a resources issue more than anything.
And, and what would the difference between, I mean, in the recommendations presented in the staff report, it says, and require a council majority, how would that benefit? Did we pass the questions part already? May I ask a question? No, is that okay?
You can ask a question during comments, right?
Okay. How would that benefit the staff? How would that support the staff, you know, that you would get the council majority? What's, what's the difference there?
So, so a couple of things, first off, I, I want to make it clear to councilmember Story, this wasn't just about the, the leaf blower. It was the most recent example, but there's been a, there's been a trend of this, and, and actually, actually, the most, the most significant situation like this came about with the drill box traffic coming. And frankly, there was a community group that came up to public comment, and it got referred to the Traffic and Parking Commission, who went and then spent literally months working on things, doing studies, counting cars, developing all kinds of big alternatives, and then, and then it came back to the council, who concluded that there really was no great solution. And at that point, there'd been so much work done, it was, it was a challenge. So the issue here really is about, I think the city attorney articulated it pretty well, is about an individual council basically, from the day is, creating this work item. And it's fine, it hasn't been a terribly big problem, but I've seen it happen a number of times, and then I saw it go pretty wrong that once, and I've realized that it's kind of a weakness we have in our system. So the alternative to answer your question, councilwoman Brooks, the, the first bullet there would be basically, rather than saying, I would like issue X to go to committee Y, as an individual, you'd say, Mr. City Manager, can you please put on the next agenda? as an individual, you'd say, "Mr. City Manager, can you please put on the next agenda an item to refer this to a commission?" And then the next committee, the next city council agenda would have, "We've had a request to refer, refer a potential leaf blower ordinance to the Commission on the Environment. Here's a little background on leaf blower ordinances. Here's about how much estimated time that it would take place. The full council would consider it and say thumbs up or thumbs down, something we want to do or not." So that would be that first bullet point. The second bullet point is kind of this in-between thing where an individual council member could, in response to something somebody was saying from the public, in public comment, "I think this would be a great item for a commission X to work on. Does anyone else agree?" And then with the concurrence of one or two others, it would get referred to a commission. So those are the two differences. And either situation just provides either more information before the decision's made in the first example and a full council majority, or in the second example, just more than one council member sort of sending the city off on this path.
Thank, thank you. I, and I would agree that you weren't the only one, Sam. I too have done this about the plastics situation. And one thing that's come up, at least for me, is the, the follow-up. And by agendizing something like that, holds staff more accountable to, to doing that follow-up versus me saying, "Hey, Jamie," or "Hey, City Manager, do you remember that I brought this up at city ad, public comment and I asked for this?" And, and so I've kind of run into that scenario where, since it hasn't been agendized, it's kind of been the circular thing. So, I could see how it holds everyone more accountable with, um, option one.
Councilmember Botor, if you have a comment?
Thank you. You know, I, I wanted to bring up another case because I had one also, Sam. Remember when we were doing the arts commission? And we're doing the banners in the village. And I said, "Well, why don't we refer that to the arts commission?" And we, and the, the thing that came out of that was, is you were protecting the arts commission because, you know, as Jamie's doing. You didn't want to overburden them with a, you know, with a one-person request. And that's why I come from the position where like, I don't think one person on the council should dictate any action we take. I think the only way we learned that was we learned last year that, uh, if the mayor wants to call a special meeting, he can do that. But, but, but other than that, it takes a couple of us to, to do something. So, that's why my suggestion was that we do two things, two people to do that. But I think going with, uh, councilmember Brooks's theory, it's probably better in the long run if we say, "Can we agendize that?" Because we all have the right to agendize something. That's already an argument. Say, "Can we agendize that for possible recommendation to a commission?" And then it comes back and then we have the discussion. So, I'm actually okay with either one, but I was trying to just get away from any one of us just dictating, "Send that to the arts commission, okay?" Because we had a lively discussion and then, you know, we, every, every one of us. So I, so I, I think we all carry a little bit of the, the, the city manager's ire as far as just randomly pointing out commissions to do stuff. So, um, and I'm okay with either one of those. And if it, if the, if the council feels it's better that we use our, our, in our policy we already have where we are allowed to put something on the agenda and agendize it, I could live with either one.
So, add a little bit here. So if we're recommending, or we are proposing to recommend to a committee, um, have them be part of that process to determine if this is something for them to work on. So, I have no problem with saying, "If we really want to agendize it, more than two people," I could go along with that. But I'd like to hear from the committee whether they think it's a thing that they would like to actually work on. Does it really fit into their scheme of how to approach things? And I'll tell you why. So, it'll come up in our next part of this discussion in terms of the chair of those committees agendizing things. So I've been on the, um, I won't be on the FAC anymore, but I've been on the FAC for over 12 years. And one of the things that keeps coming up is, we can't do anything unless we get it from city council. But there are things that have come up in that 12 years of discussion that seem like reasonable things, you know? And so how do we get it on our agenda, agendas, so we could act on it? So you could go to the city council person and go that route too. So, there's, I believe, um, a willingness to be part of that discussion to see if it's a good item to discuss from that committee. And so if we throw something to them, I think having whatever committee that is, be part of that discussion would be a good thing. So I could see what you're saying, not a lot of work on staff, but have something that goes to the commission. Uh, the commission wants to be involved. They want to, uh, focus on this thing which they volunteered to do. So to have them be a part of that discussion, I think is a good thing. And I think that sort of came up with the art and cultural, okay? So, um, I have no problem with the two people from city council to actually agendize something to a committee. But if we say, "We'd kind of like to see if they would like that," and we ask staff to come back, I'd like to have that commission get a, a, a take on that, you know, some sort of say, "Do we want to discuss this? Do we feel this is a reasonable thing for our committee to do?" And a little bit about the jewel box thing. Um, even though it was a long and laborious process to figure out what to do in the jewel box, that, that process, I think we learned a lot. And if we hadn't involved the people in the jewel box and we had just sort of run with it, I think it would have been a minor revolt, you know? There were some problems. Obviously, there was a lot of people that were, were upset. But in the end, that whole process, I think, came up with something that worked. Um, I think people were a lot happier with the results because they were involved, you know? And sometimes that's what makes these things work, is the fact that you actually go to the citizenry and get them involved, even though it takes a little bit of extra work. In the end, we want something that large portions of our citizenry are acceptable. They're acceptable because they were part of the process. They might be acceptable because it answers their particular issues. But in the long run, I think it spreads it out and the whole system works.
Uh, if I, if I may, um, throw out an option for council to consider, we could do both and say that a council member, uh, excuse me, concurrence of two council members is required to send a ref, to refer something to committee. And if someone suggests that, he doesn't get that second, they could simply say, "Then I would like to see it come in a future agenda."
I like that.
Any thoughts, any thoughts on that?
We can do that. We can do that currently.
No, if you, if she's saying that if he gets the second, then it would go to the commission. But if it doesn't get the second, then we would have what we already, would already exist, which is-
Right.
We can put it on the agenda. But, but if you, if you, like, if you came up and you said the leaf blower thing and you said, "Uh, I'd like to recommend that. Can I get a second?" One of us might have said, I might have said, "I'll second that." Because it, it, it made, to me, that request made sense. I'm just saying that, Mike. And what Chris and I, what the mayor said, I believe, is that if, if you, if all of a sudden you throw it and you hear crickets, okay? You can just look at the city manager and say, "I'd like to put that on a future agenda." And, and then we all win. It just takes a little bit longer.
Then, yeah, then there's an opportunity for, for debate and an actual vote on whether or not that should be done. I can understand if you say, "I'd like this to go to a committee" and you don't get a second, it seems like it would be dead. However, if you don't get a second and then it comes back on an agenda and there's itemized opportunity to explain why and, um, a formal vote, um, so I'm, that's just an option that occurred to me as something for conversation.
Yeah. Well, if I'm, I, that's, I mean, we already have the ability to agendize at a meeting for a future meeting, so, um-
But with two votes, Sam, you could do it right away.
Two-
If, if you came up and said, "If that guy's at the podium and you said, 'I'd like to send that to the Commission on the Environment,' can I get a second?" And if I would have said, "I'll second that," then it doesn't go to the, it, 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 it happens immediately.
To the commission.
Well, I, I think that starts with the process, right?
Why don't we have options?
I, I just, what I, what I, I mean, just, what I'm, think is good about just a referral process, i- it's, uh, a way to engage our volunteer committee members, uh, without a high-level council direction and letting them make the decision about whether it's appropriate or not. And then coming back in coordination with staff, uh, to either say, I mean, to reject it and where, then it dies, uh, or to have a plan of action, um, in order to move forward, which would then require, would have to be agendized, would require council majority. So, I think that the ability just to refer something, it kind of relieves a little political community pressure on taking some immediate steps to address an issue that, uh, one of our neighbors may have. And it may be something that we yet do not have enough information to decide whether it's even appropriate to have staff put on an agenda, uh, because those are pretty high-level discussions, at least I would hope they are, and would require a lot of preliminary research, whereas this is just a referral. And I think, as the city attorney said, it's about resource allocation and using, uh, them at, uh, whenever at the lowest level to make a, an efficient determination about whether we even have the ability to move forward on a particular issue. And so, I mean, with that, I, I mean, and, and maybe it should be more than one, but if we have the concurrence of two council members just to make a referral. And to me, that does not mean any, there's not an, a, um, a instruction or an assistance upon that advisory committee to actually take that ball and run with it. It's just asking them, "Look, is this an issue that you think you are interested in, fits within your, um, uh, purpose? Um, and you have the ability to follow through with? Answer those questions and then come back to us." And if they say no, then I think it, yeah, then we have to ask the majority, before it goes any further, there has to be a majority here to make that happen, um, one way or the other. And so, so that's what, that's just my thought about it. Um, and, um, but, so I, I think the second option on that, on that, um, would be fine.
Councilmember Story, if I'm understanding correctly, and maybe this is just a matter of wording that we need to reconsider, is that what you're suggesting is that a request for a committee to consider taking up an item would require only one council member?
No.
No.
No. That, that's, the second option is that in order to make a referral, and to me, a request and a referral are synonymous, okay? Requires, uh, this would take two, at least two council members to make happen. So no one of us could do it, but if you had a concurrence of one of the council member, at least becomes a referral for them to, for the staff to bring to them and say, "Is this something that you feel that you could do?" Because that was the question that we were discussing about the arts commission. All I was asking is that it be a request to them, which they embraced. They took it on, okay? And so, um, to me, that's what the referral would do. But I'm saying, I agree, let's have it be at least two council members before even that happens.
Okay. Councilmember Botor and then Vice Mayor-
I think I fundamentally understand what you're saying. And, and because of that, I think I disagree with you, okay? Because, well, this is what came back to the last thing. It's just, my position right now, unfortunately, is that I believe I'm an elected official and I believe that that attorney over there and that city manager serve at the will of this council. And I believe that those bodies serve at the will of the council. That's why we, that's why they are on these bodies. And, and I think what we got into last time is you felt that I needed to ask the planning commission if they would like to take this on. And I was put off by that. I mean, I, I'll say it straight out. I, no, those bodies are here, the FAC, the parking commission, they're here to assist the city council. And if we have a group of people, and I'm saying not just one, but two, I don't want to ask them to do that. It, I, I'm, this is, they're here to serve us. And if we say, "This is something the council needs." We have two council members that feel this is important for you to look into this and this is what you do. So I think, and what I want to say is, I'm thinking I fundamentally disagree with you because you want to make it a referral or request. And I'm saying, I think it should take two. I don't think any one person should dictate anything. But if two people say that a, a, that the parking commission or the planning commission, not the planning, but the parking or the Commission on the Environment, or the finance committee should look at something, then it should be done. And that's me. I just want to make sure that, that, that everybody understands why you and I, that you and I are, are different on this item.
And, and just maybe to respond to that, uh, quickly, Ed, and, um, because I, I think you and I want the same thing, okay? And for me, it's just a question of bandwidth and capacity. Are you sending it to the right people in the right place? Um, and if you don't have a willingness, I don't think you're going to get a good result. And so you might as well start there about asking about what they feel, their own self-assessment about their ability to do that. That's all I'm saying. And, but I get your point too. But I think that you should always assess before you impose. That's it. And so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Uh, council, uh, Vice Mayor Brooks and then councilmember Bertrand.
And, and hearing the both of you speak, I, that's why I ultimately feel that option one would really balance that out, requiring that a referring issue to an advisory committee be an agendized item. I don't know that I would want at that moment in time when someone comes up to say, "Oh, what does, what does everyone think right now?" Because we don't have that kind of information at our fingertips. What I would like to do is say to staff, "Hey, can you look into this? Is this an option for our environmental committee? Can you look into it? Give them a call, see if this works out for them and put on the agenda or report back to me to, um, report back to the council if this is something that they can take on." I, I think that's how we can get to, to both, to, to get what we want is by, by, um, with option one. I think it's, it, it, the agendized item, it might not necessarily be an agendized item, right? It would, could possibly be, well, the, the environmental committee reported back and said they can't take this on right now because they've got 15 other things, but you could report back to us at the next meeting. Um, so I don't know if we could adjust the language just to say, requiring that a referring issue to advisory committees be, um, X, Y, and Z, or be a request to staff for future comment or for future, for, as a future agendized item or slash discussion item, or something like that. Because it's hard to say that an agendized item, well, I guess agendized item doesn't have to necessarily be an action item, right?
So you could certainly agendize an add, an item and take no action. I mean, it could be a discussion of leaf blowers. We'll use that as an example.
Yeah.
I, I do think, so there seems to be a disagreement about the role of committees between councilmember Botor and councilmember Story. One thing you might think about is to, if, if you were interested in, if there's ever a time where you would like to resolve that issue on a case-by-case basis, for instance, if there's some issue that one council member may feel is somewhat important to have an advisory committee look at, but if the advisory committee doesn't have time, that's fine, no big deal, versus another issue where all three, four, or five of you may feel like this is absolutely something that needs to go to a committee, that is not something that you can resolve without the matter being on the agenda. You can't, if someone comes up in public comment and says, "This is an issue," and then one council member says, "This should go to a committee," that's about the extent of a comment that you can make without the item being on the agenda. So, if you're interested, it, there does seem to be a split about what a committee's role is. If that is something that you'll think you want to resolve on a case-by-case basis, you, you will need to agendize the item.
So, let, see if I can help a little bit. From, from my standpoint, the city manager, I think, the number one thing behind this is that the act of referring an item to a committee, um, generally involves a lot of resources, more than in general, an item, just bringing an item to the city council. Just because committees often will ask a lot of questions, there'll be follow-up meetings with the groups. They may volunteer to do counts, things like that. It generally can turn, it doesn't always, but it can, it, it certainly has the potential to turn into quite a work item. Um, I think, I think about these two options sort of as, number one is, is kind of the most bureaucratic and the most strategic. It's like, it's kind of nice to be able to deal with, I think, as councilmember Story said, somebody's at the podium and we just resolve it. We say, "Yep, go work with the Traffic and Parking Commission." It's a nice solution. It's not very strategic and it's a bit reactionary at times. The second alternative is more responsive and we can deal with something and we don't have to be really bureaucratic. It gets it moving and it sends it to a place. But at times, particularly if it's, if it's just one council member, it can be, it's not super strategic. There's not necessarily a lot of analysis done of like, is this even a thing we can do? Can we even regulate leaf blowers? You know, that, those kinds of fundamental questions aren't answered. So, that's the way I differentiate those two options, is the first one is, is more bureaucratic, more strategic. And the second one is more responsive and, moving quickly.
And to go back to Vice Mayor Brooks's question, one of the, um, items that may come out of an agendized item, if the agenda item is, "Bring back a discussion for us about leaf blowers," and one of the options may be to refer the item to a committee, something that may come out of that meeting, instead of a referral to a committee, might be, "We can't regulate that. We can't, I think we probably can't regulate leaf blowers." Actually, I'm sure we can regulate leaf blowers, so that is just an- Actually, I'm sure we can regulate leaf blowers, so that is just an example. It's hypothetical. Um, but, just, uh, it would give, it gives, having staff come back to you first does give the council the opportunity to consider options other than something going to a committee, including it not going to a committee.
And it pulls all of you, all of us more accountable to follow up.
If I may, I believe Councilmember Bertrand was waiting to speak. Do you still have comments?
Um, I do. But it's more in the vein of Yvette, you know, sort of thinking out loud. And I, I think we have some discretion in terms of what we ask our committee members to do. So I think Sam brought up that it could help us in a tight situation, like a political situation. In the fact, I've realized that sometimes an issue may be difficult to bring up, like, are we going to impose some kind of tax? Or are we going to impose some kind of user fee? You know, maybe hard to get those out in the open. But maybe the fact could enumerate these things. Um, Finance Director could look at other examples in various cities and stuff like that. And these could be put on the table. It wouldn't necessarily be, we recommend that this would be the case that city council would adopt, but we are putting these on the table for you to consider as, as options. I like the idea of going to our various commissions to do some of the groundwork, not necessarily the deep dig. So not putting city staff in the situation of having to spend hours and hours and hours on something. But to do the first look, the first approach to how someone would approach this particular problem, and then come back to us. And then we could say to staff, we want to have this done in terms of a deep dive. Come up with some possible resolutions or scenarios. What's, what's it like in other cities and stuff like that? So I think the commissions, depending on what we ask of them, so it's not like just give it to that commission. So I think it's incumbent upon us to be responsible in what we ask of that commission. And that would set the stage for what kind of work would be done in the commission level? Or what kind of work would be done on the staff level in conjunction with supporting the commission? So maybe a way to phrase this particular change is how we would phrase the request to a commission, okay? So on some level, it could be more detailed, and so we have to have two votes. And another level could be, have a discussion on this and give us some recommendations of some ideas that you think are worthwhile discussing. And then we take it from there. Now, that might seem a little more complicated, but allows us to have more options in terms of how we refer things to committees.
Um, i- if I may, I, in listening, there, there's some points that came up that I, I think are really important. And one was, uh, one that I thought of was if it only takes one person to put something on a future agenda and it comes off of, for example, public comment, we may find ourselves in a situation where every person that comes up to the podium is expecting that what they have an issue with will be sent to a committee because they've seen it happen before. And that is a concern, um, of mine. We get a lot of emails, we get a lot of calls, we get a lot of people that come here with different concerns. And so it is a concern of mine that every person that comes to the podium will say, well, you sent that leaf blower thing to the environment. Why won't you send my concern about graffiti to the Art and Cultural Commission? And then we're going to have to be in a, in a position to defend each of our individual decisions or, or choices to or not to send something to a committee. Um, another thing that I think is really important is Vice Mayor Brooks mentioned, having an agenda report uh, come back to us with additional information is something that I hadn't considered that I think would be really important. Someone could come to us and say, we wanted, why, what's up with the leaf blowers? And we say, send that to the Environment Committee, when in fact, all, we may just need a staff report that comes back and go, hey, here's how we can regulate leaf blowers, here's how we can't. Um, and if at the end of that discussion, we realize, oh, well, we're still at it, at an impasse, I think at that point, we would have a vote on, on sending something to an advisory committee rather than, than just a suggestion. Um, I can certainly understand and respect both the idea that we're requesting a, a committee to review something. I think it's important to, uh, to request and not demand. At the same time, I can also understand that we are appointing the people in these committees to do these exact, these exact, uh, jobs. So, um, personally, I, I feel that, um, at, at this point, I feel personally that the requiring, uh, an agendized item for a future vote for something to go to, um, a committee would be beneficial because it's possible that once we get that agendized item on, uh, in front of us at a meeting, we'll realize it never needed to go to, to a committee. That we have the answers, that it's already in our code, that our, uh, highly skilled and educated staff already has the answer for us. Um, so that's my, my comment at this time, and we'll continue discussion.
If you're with bullet one, I concur.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a motion?
And we're not, we're looking for, or do you want to direct now? We're not, we're not voting.
Do you need a motion for one or the other to be put on the?
Cause you have a split council here.
At this point, I would, I would like to see if we can get, uh, three votes for one of the options.
So is it appropriate to call for a vote anytime like this when we've got a split? Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and, and call for, um, a motion, I guess. We would need a motion first, okay?
I'll make a motion, um, with option one, requiring that referring issues to an advisory committee be an agendized item and require a council majority.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote for this.
Councilmember Story.
No.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Botoroff.
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand.
No.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
We have direction.
Next.
All right. Uh, the third item on, or the third issue on item, uh, eight C is placing item on agenda. So previously, previously it was, um, an issue of us sending matters to committees. Uh, right now, we're, we're considering if chairs of advisory bodies can send matters to us, um, without any additional action. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, comments? Councilmember Botoroff.
I don't want to see any county committees putting things on the agenda.
Okay. Further comments? Councilmember Bertrand.
Um, I have no problem. Um, we've chosen these people to act in these particular capacities, whether it's finance, environment, um, art and cultural. And to me, that says we're asking them to come up with ideas within that purview, that very restrictive purview. That doesn't mean we have to act on them, but for them to come up with ideas that might be of interest to us, I think is a good thing. And to forward those to the city council, which may take that as an, I'm to agendize or not agendize, is fine with me.
Well, no, no, that's more odd. They're saying they can agendize an item. That's a difference.
So this is the way I read this. The way I read it, cause.
Well, the city manager can clarify.
Okay. So, but this is the way I read it, okay? Not agendize for a city council, but to agendize for that committee.
No. To agendize for city council.
Okay.
They can put items on our agenda.
Okay. So I read it wrong.
So you have a different opinion now?
I'll agree with that one.
Okay. Comments, Vice Mayor Brooks?
I just have a question. So if, I'm just thinking of a scenario, if this were a FAC, our, our FAC committee, and they were working on something and they have a recommendation to bring forward a new tax or something like that, how would that take place? How, what would be the next steps for them if they didn't have permission to do so?
They would talk to the city manager.
Well, both the mayor and the vice mayor sit on that commission.
Okay, so what's another, what's another committee that I can use, uh, as an, an example?
Commission on the Environment.
Okay, so then, um, Commission on the Environment, just have been working on the plastics ordinance, want to do updates, want to bring it to council for the ordinance to be updated. How would they do that?
So the process would mean that the staff person for the Commission on the Environment would basically come into my office and say, hey, the update on plastics is ready to go to council.
So could the code, instead of saying, no, you can't put those, like, instead of saying no, should it be more open to say, the process is that the staff that sit on, you know, have the permission to bring things forward to council? Cause it just sounds really stringent to not be allowed to. It sounds almost like you're not allowed to bring anything forward, the way I'm reading it.
And can, oh, I mean, just couldn't the advisory chair come to a council member and say, we want, I want this on the agenda?
There's a lot of different ways. Really, all it says is that the, that the, the chairperson can't put something on the agenda.
Right, they can't do it themselves, but.
There's a lot of different. That's what they're asking us. That's why I said adamantly, no. But if they ask.
There's many other ways.
There is someone on that commission, and all they do is say, when you're in the FAC, can you put this, and go, sure.
Well, I just want them, that there's a clear process for them.
There's a lot of different.
Without the staff being the sole gatekeepers about what comes on the agenda. They could come to us, the advisory committees could come to us direct.
Any council member could put anything on any agenda.
That's right.
That's how it's been working for years.
Yeah, but not a committee member, but not a committee.
Pardon me, I wasn't done with my question. Um, the, so my, my question is, what is in the current ordinance? Does it say no or, or yes, that they can or cannot? Is there any language about that?
Right there.
That's it. The current code requires a council member to place an item on a future agenda item requesting at a public meeting. But aren't we talking about the chair?
No, that says, current code requires council mem, council members can, oh, okay.
So this is, it says the following shall have the authority to place a matter on a council agenda. The mayor or any member of the council, with the condition that the proposed agenda item be requested at an open city council meeting.
Okay.
The city manager, the city council may, after the seventy-two hour posting, add items in the manner provided in the government code.
That's emergency.
And then it says the chair of a border commission.
And so what you're presenting today is to strike that through?
Yeah, I mean.
And it hasn't been an issue in the past?
It hasn't been an issue in the past, but, but I think as, I mean, it's, it's just a little bit funny that there's more authority for a border commission chair than there is for individual council members. That's the thing that's just, we've noticed.
Okay, that's all, that's my question.
Can we go back to the slide that had the, can we go back to the blue slide?
The easy slide.
The easy slide, yeah. I want big letters and small paragraphs. Um, how about, um, what, what does the council think about something like chairs of an advisory body may add something to a council agenda upon approval of city manager or a city council member?
Like complicating.
What, isn't that what we're doing? It's complicating?
No, we're trying to, what we're doing.
Oh, we just want to get rid of it.
What we're doing is cleaning up language as the mayor.
So if we strike that altogether, okay, I see what you're saying. We could strike it altogether and they would still have the right to come through a council member or city manager.
Like they always do at every commission meeting.
Like they already do.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a cleanup is all.
Do we agree to that? To just strike that altogether?
I would like to make a motion that we strike the language allowing a committee chairman to put something on the agenda.
Motion to go and strike, oh, excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. We have made it through item eight C.
Wow. I feel like it's budget time, okay?
Good deliberation though, everyone.
It was.
Good teamwork.
And we, I love you talking out loud.
A, a, and you know, we didn't bring some of the other more ministerial items, maybe we should have about, you know, the time and place of council meetings. We'll have another crack at it next meeting.
Should I call a special meeting for that to happen?
No, no, I think we can, we can knock it all out in the next meeting.
Just kidding. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to, uh, item eight D, annual donations report.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, this is the fiscal year twenty nineteen, or I'm sorry, fiscal year eighteen twen, nineteen, annual donations report. Um, first, I'd like to just point out that the city of Capitola benefits greatly from the generosity of individuals, local businesses, nonprofits, as well as others in the community. And in July of twenty thirteen, the city implemented a donations policy. And that policy basically gives the authority to the city manager to accept grants of five thousand dollars or less and appropriate those for already pre-approved projects and programs. And it also established a procedure for acknowledging and reporting donations. So as far as fiscal year eighteen nineteen, uh, city received a little over four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in donations and grants. Um, sixty-eight, a little over sixty-eight thousand of that was donations from individuals of five thousand dollars or less. I have a list up there. I don't want to read the slide to you, but I thought it was important to, it's in the staff report and for the folks that, at home to at least see the, uh, not so much the dollar amounts, but the types of programs that get grant funded and the folks that are, um, doing that. So you can see some of the, the, um, like Movies at the Beach and Twilight Concerts and Sunday Art and Music. And then those folks that are contributing to those, or donating to those programs. Um, and then as far as Twilight Concerts, I wanted to pull that one out because there's a number of businesses down in the village and throughout Capitola that contribute to that. And without those donations, those Twilight Concerts wouldn't possibly take place or a lot less of them might take place. Also, last year, we received a little over a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars in state and federal grants. Um, and I have those listed up there. Again, I don't want to read the slide, but I thought it was important to at least, um, list up there what the grants are for and how we got them, or which entity we got them from. And finally, um, this report's basically focused on the five thousand dollars or less, but I did, we do have, um, we can take donations of greater than five thousand if we have an agreement within any entity. And right now, we have one of those agreements with Friends of the Capitola Library. And, um, they contributed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars they had over at the Santa Cruz County Community Foundation, which brings their total, I just, uh, went through what we had received through yesterday. And we're sitting right at about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in donations and pledges. So we've received four seventy-five and we have pledged for another fifty. My understanding that there's, there's some other, um, commitments that have been made to the friends that are going to push that number probably north of six hundred thousand. So a very successful, um, fundraising campaign. And then once they're done with their fundraising campaign, we'll come back and do a full report on just the donations that were around the library project. So tonight's recommended, recommended action is to receive the report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? No question, uh, uh, Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, maybe you don't have the itemized donations, whatever. But, um, I know the current part of the, uh, donation for the library right now is the pavers.
Yes.
Which has been very successful. Do you have any idea how much, uh, we're getting right now with pavers? And is that donation cycle still available for the public to participate in?
So the, the paver donations, my understanding is the deadline has been extended a month at this point, maybe extended again. We've had a lot of activity in the last week or so as we approach that deadline. Off the top of my head, I want to say we're getting close to sixty thousand dollars
Wow.
of donations for just the pavers. And it's probably close to two hun, that's probably a little more than two hundred pavers now.
Okay, can you tell the public what the pavers are and where, where they'll be placed in the present library? That current, that library to be planned?
I can tell you what the pavers are. As far as placement, I'll probably have to defer to Steve. But there's three different options for pavers, um, a six by six, a six by twelve, and a twelve by twelve. Um, a hundred and twenty-five, two twenty-five, or three twenty-five, based on the size of the paver. And then as you get larger, you get, uh, your.
More lines.
Put more lines of text in there. And I don't know the exact number. I want to say that's like the first paver is one line, the second is two, and then three. But don't hold me to that one. As far as placement, I'm going to defer to Steve.
Yes, the pavers will be located, uh, to the outside, the, uh, front door of the library. There'll be three. There's kind of a patio or sorts, um, and they'll be in that walkway, uh, in three sections.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? No? Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, uh, we'll bring it back for any further council comments?
I just want to say thank you to all the donors for, um, supporting our city and, um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Yes.
I was prepared to read off the list, but thank you for putting them on a slide, cause I, I totally agree with Yvette. It's amazing how much the, um, businesses in particular, and like junior lifeguards also have been donating a lot of money uh, to the city and, um, greatly appreciated.
And a lot of these donors, uh, donate on an annual basis, so it's not one time. It's, it's every year.
Yep. Well, the junior guards is great, uh, the concerts are great, all these things are just wonderful. They contribute to the, uh, wonderfulness of being here in Capitola.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, if there's no additional council comments and there's no additional items, what?
I have a comment.
You have another comment?
Yes, I do. Not on this side, but on general. So, um, I think it's been suggested in terms of, uh, Jamie, a, uh, council item, and it was brought up, I just want to remind it, uh, that this, I think, needs to be dealt with. And that is to, um, have a session or have an off-site session that deals with protocols and procedures for how, uh, city council should it be in terms of conducting public business. Um, I'd like to add to that, that we also include the FAC and the city planning commissions so that we're all on board and maybe, you know, council environment and other committees. So that we're all on board in terms of how we interact amongst each other and how we are. So that we're all on board in terms of how we interact amongst each other and how we are conducting business for the city of Capitola. Thank you. So this has been requested in the past. I'm just extending it to other committees so that we have across the board a uniform way of doing business for the city of Capitola.
Just so I have clarity on this, we have a pending item, which is a code of conduct for the council. And that was going to be a code of conduct for the council, I think, for other city officials. Uh, that is pending. Is that what we're talking about here?
Um, yeah, I, it, it may be pending in terms of your planning process, but it hasn't been brought to us yet.
Oh, no, it hasn't happened yet. It's, it's coming.
So, um, I'd like to add that, you know, uh, at this point, I hope the city council would agree with this. I'd like to see other commissions be part of this. I, I don't think it's just the city council that needs to benefit from this, but city planning, uh, council on the environment and other issue, other council committees that, you know, we appoint members to.
We will be agendizing that for coming meeting.
Thank you, group.
Thank you. Okay.
Also invite the committee members, obviously.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Uh, with that, we have reached the end of our meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Good night. And now we, uh, will be moving on to the successor agency meeting. So now I call that meeting to order. Sorry, was that you?
No, it was perfect.
I'll get a mouse pad or something. Uh, roll call?
Board member's story.
Still here.
For, uh, board or staff comments? Does any staff have any comments? Do any members of the board have any comments?
I have one question, though, that's all.
Wait, is it related to an item on the agenda?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
It is. Okay, let's wait till we get there. We're almost there. Uh, item, next item, consent calendar. Uh, does any member of the public wish to address the board on, uh, the consent calendar? Seeing none.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um.
Story, sorry. In to, have to change programming. That was Story and.
Any opposed? No abstentions? Uh, carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight A, general government and public hearings. And that is a recognized obligation payment schedule. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so this is just the annual adoption of our recognized obligation payment schedule related to the Capitola Successor Agency. At this point, we're down to, to basically three items. Uh, we have, we're requesting a total of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seventy dollars. Fifteen thousand is for the Housing Authority Rental Assistance Program. Eighty-eight thousand and seventy dollars is for the Castle Mobile Home Housing Assistance Program. And that will be the end of their funding under the successor agency. That's why it's that oddball number. And then, uh, fifteen thousand for our admin costs. I believe that next year, now that we're wrapping up Castle, I'm going to have conversations with the Housing Authority, but I believe that they're pretty much wrapping up their program. So next year, we will probably be doing this for the final time, is what the hope is. But, um, for tonight, the recommended action is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one recognized obligation schedule. And if, uh, that is approved this evening, then I will be at the countywide oversight meeting on January twenty-first to get the oversight approval, and then we send it off to the state by February first. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Questions?
Um, how much longer for this? I understand Castle because we had it extended.
I, I believe that next year, we'll be able to fi- file our final ROPS. I just need to confirm that. I need to go through the, um, the Housing Authority Agreement one more time. But we're wrapped up with Castle. We're pretty much done with RISBEN. And, um, I just need to see what's left with the Housing Authority. I will probably do a final ROPS next year, but there could be another lingering payment or two after that. But we're getting really close to the end.
Any further questions? With that, we'll bring it to the public. If there's any member of the public seeing none, we would like to return to council comments and motion.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.